On items that are not under the, or not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, we cannot take any action on these items raised at this time. If you wish to give us any public comments, please just use the raised hand feature or star nine.
Mr. Vice Chair, there appears no one here to provide public comments. We may move to the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Our next item is public hearings. We had on the agenda that there was going to be a public hearing on the North Creek Church Gymnasium CUP modification. But I believe that was pulled. Commissioner or Mr. Secretary, do you have any information you want to provide us?
Just to clarify and to reiterate that, yes, the application was going to be presented, but the applicant contacted staff to withdraw the request for modification. Therefore, because we had publicly noticed the hearing and it was agendized, we did need to make this note publicly, but there is no hearing item. So those who may have tuned in for that item, there is no hearing and we'll be moving on to the next portion of our agenda.
Thank you. Do you know if they will be coming back to us in the future on this item?
To be determined. I think that they are evaluating as a school. It was school related. I think they're evaluating where I think we are as a society or as a state relative to education, in-person education at their school. And so I don't have an answer at the moment, but stay tuned.
Thank you very much. We'll move on then. Our next item of business is commission considerations. This evening, we will be discussing implementation of Senate Bill seven forty-three vehicle miles traveled. I believe we have a staff report. Or should I say presentation?
Yes, that's correct. Smadar Boardman, City Traffic Engineer. Today we'll be presenting on implementation of Senate Bill seven forty-three. You know what our plan of action here really is and what we're looking for are, we're really looking for some substantial feedback and recommendations. We'll, we'll guide through kind of what our thoughts are on how we would implement these changes that are Sequo related changes to traffic impacts and how they're studied. But we'll walk through that and then we, we are seeking that feedback this evening. So today we have with us Ian Barnes from Fair and Peers. They are the traffic consultant who is assisting the city with this implementation effort.
Great. Thanks, Smadar. If you allow me one second here to share my screen again. Can somebody please confirm that my, that you guys can see my presentation?
You're up.
Perfect. Thank you. Well, as Smadar did mention, my name's Ian Barnes. I'm with Fair and Peers Transportation Consultants out of the Wana Creek office. I'm joined this evening by my colleague Ashley Takushi. And as Smadar mentioned, we've been assisting the city of Wana Creek in the implementation of Senate Bill seven forty-three. And the switch from congestion-based metrics such as level of service for secret transportation analysis and moving to vehicle miles of travel, a new metric as required by SB seven forty-three. I'll be, we're gonna, tonight I'm going to give a quick, a little bit of background on SB seven forty-three, what it does, what it doesn't do. I'll also be giving some background on the recommendations presented by the Contra Costa Transportation Authority to its member agencies as part of a regional implementation effort. And then talking a bit more about project screening mitigation options. And so as I go through this presentation, I will be stopping a few times for if commissioners have any clarifying questions as we go through it. It's a bit of a technical topic, so hopefully we're going to make it easy to digest here tonight, but do you want to provide a plenty of opportunities for questions midstream? So please do feel to interrupt if a question does come up. So with that, the California Environmental Quality Act, as I'm sure many on the commission know, requires that we analyze a project's environmental effects, including, including those related to the transportation system. In the Sequo guidelines, which guide how we, how we do analyses under Sequo, we are required to do a good faith effort that does not use scientifically outdated information. And the, and our analysis procedure should improve as more and better data becomes available. So back in twenty thirteen, Senate Bill seven forty-three was passed by the legislature in Sacramento and signed into law by Governor Brown. SB seven forty-three came about because of the city or the state wanting to encourage and fuel development, improve public health through active transportation such as walking and biking. Then also looking at reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Really SB seven forty-three came about because the, the state was beginning to miss some of its climate-related greenhouse gas reduction targets as required by AB thirty-two and other pieces of statewide legislation that have been passed over the past fifteen years or so. So it has been on, this law has been on the books for a while. Since twenty thirteen, it's just taken about seven years to get it implemented because it is such a fundamental change to the way that transportation impacts are identified for projects. So what does SB seven forty-three do? Well, this is a case where the state legislature has mandated, has mandated a change in the way that we measure impacts in the transportation, transportation section for Sequo. We must use the VMT metric or vehicle miles of travel metric in our Sequo analysis. And what they've also done is they've also taken away congestion-based metrics such as level of service from use in secret transportation analysis. Now, we can still use level of service to define physical improvements as part of a project to plan out the circulation system, for example. But that's a very different way of looking at level of service than actually measuring impacts. Ultimately, what Senate Bill seven forty-three is trying to do here is shifting the focus of the Sequo transportation section from looking at impacts to drivers caused by a project to looking at the impacts from driving generated by the project. It's also important to note what SB seven forty-three does not change. It does not change general plans as well as general plan policies related to congestion, like a level of service standard, which is what the city of Wana Creek has. It doesn't change AB sixteen hundred traffic impact fee programs, which condition projects to pay into impact fee funds to build new capacity to alleviate congestion issues. It also doesn't change the state constitution or the subdivision map act or other related pieces of legislation which allow lead agencies to review developments and to condition developments. And where this comes in is that the city can still choose to require level of service analysis or an analysis of a project's effect on congestion on the roadway system. That analysis, though, can no longer live in the Sequo document. It has to go to, it has to go through another, another process. So with that, I'd like to stop just right at, right at this stage to see if there's any questions from commissioners on, on just kind of the background behind SB seven forty-three and what it does and what it doesn't do. And it's a little bit hard here because I think I only see about two or three commissioners here on my screen. So if there's any questions, please do feel free to, I guess, to speak up. Alrighty, hearing none, I guess we'll, we'll carry on. So in light of the fact that Senate Bill seven forty-three results in such a fundamental change to the way that Sequo analysis is done for transportation impacts, the State Office of Planning and Research, or OPR, came out with a technical advisory back in twenty eighteen when the guidelines were being finalized that implemented SB seven forty-three. Now, as, as the name suggests, this is not a binding document. The, the city does not have to abide by it if it does not choose to do so. However, when a, when, when a lead agency adopts thresholds for general use, it has to be done so on the basis of substantial evidence. And really, the technical advisory does give agencies who choose to follow it, that substantial evidence behind the decision, behind the decisions needed to get a good Sequo threshold. So the technical advisory does give general guidance on metrics or what VMT to measure under SB seven forty-three. Methods, how VMT is calculated, suggested thresholds. If you've heard the term fifteen percent below the baseline or eighty-five percent of the baseline, that's where these numbers are partially coming from. And then screening criteria. And what screening criteria allow you to do are to presume that certain projects and certain contexts or types do not need to do a VMT analysis for Sequo because they are already low VMT generating, for example. So that's statewide guidance that's been around now for about, for about a year and a half. As Smadar had mentioned, the city has gone through a, a series of efforts on their, on their own volition to implement SB seven forty-three. In addition to that, as part of parallel efforts, the Contra Costa Transportation Authority has looked at how to help out its member agencies on a regional basis. So the city efforts have consisted of informing city commissions and councils as to the changes that are occurring under SB seven forty-three. How SB seven forty-three will affect the city traffic study process. Reviewing, screening and other local implementation options. And then just overall preparing the city for implementation going forward. And the parallel effort, CCTA has been looking more regionally at different types of metrics, methods, thresholds, screening, and then also mitigation options. We'll touch on mitigation a little bit more down the, a little bit later in the presentation, but mitigation is a, is a major component of the implementation effort here. Both of these parallel tracks have now come together here in summer twenty twenty as part of the city's adoption process. These adopt, this adoption process is going through the planning commission and city council because general use, secret thresholds should be adopted by ordinance or statute by the city council per the secret guidelines themselves. And to stop here, any questions on kind of the implementation efforts to date? Next, we're going to talk about metrics and methods and some of these more nitty gritty details.
Ian, can you tell us, is the CCTA, that is a, they're providing an option for the city to adopt?
Correct.
And adopt that or their own?
Correct. They have provided their recommendations on, based on some of the research they've done for thresholds and other items that member agencies could consider. Certainly, the, the city could choose to adopt different thresholds. But where it kind of comes back to is what's the evidence behind those thresholds? Really, CCTA is trying to take out some of the light work there to help out its member agencies on a more regional consistency basis.
Yeah, and just to add to that too, if we were to choose to adopt our own thresholds, if anything, they would need to be more stringent than what CCTA has provided. Just because if we don't adopt something that at least is in line with what CCTA is providing as their thresholds, we stand to lose Measure J funding.
Smadar.
Question.
To your knowledge, has anybody, is anybody planning to get more stringent on the thresholds? Any of our neighboring cities?
Yeah, actually Ian can speak to that since Fair and Peers also is the consultant for City of Concord, but they did adopt thresholds that meet CCTA's and actually goes a little bit above and beyond.
Yeah, and I think where Concord's really going is really more looking at the screening criteria, which is kind of your criteria that you can use to bypass the VMT analysis. And we can touch base on that. I'll be touching base on that a little bit more in the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. So Walner Creek is not taking any action to consider alternate thresholds other than what CCTA is suggesting. Is that correct?
So my, my approach really is that, at least from the threshold approach, and we'll talk about the screening criteria as well. It would really behoove us, especially considering how early on we are with this type of performance measure to be consistent. And that really goes back to what Ian was speaking to, which is and, you know, having the best faith effort made here.
So, so what is the mechanism by which CCTA can withhold Measure J funds? If we adopt a threshold that is less stringent, what is the mechanism that says they can do that?
Yeah, so the performance measures are actually part of the growth management program. And so when we do kind of any of these larger studies, let's say it's a very large subdivision or something like that, where we exceed a certain threshold, that's when we have to start getting our neighboring cities involved for their review on, on any of the Sequo documentation. And so part of that growth management program is looking at congested, you know, these congested corridors. For example, Ignatio Valley Road or Treat, which are both considered routes of regional significance. So that's where we have to defer to the, the significance thresholds or the acceptable, at least right now, congestion levels for those, let's say intersections or for, you know, for YVR, we use a delay index type of, of performance measure. So that's, it's not out yet, but I'm actually part of that group where we're investigating how we're going to have to revise the growth management program. And so that's, that's where that kind of comes into play.
And do you see this impacting opportunities for residential development in Walner Creek?
So I think, you know, we should, we should get through kind of like the screening criteria bit. What I will say is, one of, well, we'll get into it, but one of the screening criteria is how are we doing comparatively right now to everyone else in the region, or at least in the county? And for residential projects, we're looking at other residences and currently we're actually in pretty good shape because compared to other cities, you know, we're well-served by transit. We have a fairly good network where we don't have very high vehicle miles traveled currently. And so when you're looking at the baseline, we're actually below the threshold that's acceptable. So any kind of project that comes through, likely would get screened out because it already, it's similar in nature or characteristic to anything else we might have already in the city. But if we're dealing with something that's a little different, that's where things can get a little more complicated. But it generally, the idea of VMT is that it would make it easier for developers to be able to prepare, you know, traffic analysis for Sequo, for the sake of Sequo. Rather than, you know, the really, I mean, black box of level of service analysis that us traffic engineers, you know, we, this is what we do, but the VMT approach is really supposed to be a little more, a little easier. So an easier process for developers in terms of their application. And then likely from a development standpoint, it's mostly going to be fairly easy for now at least. And we'll, we'll kind of get into that in the next slides.
Yeah, and I think I'd just like to just jump in here really quick. I mean, the legislative intent, the whole purpose of it is to promote development in, to shift the focus of development perhaps from more of the far-flung suburbs like Eastern Contra Costa County back into areas that have high frequency, high quality transit like BART. Areas that have a good mix of retail and employment, like a downtown Wana Creek area. And those connections between, let's say, areas on the Heather Farms Park side of the hill versus the downtown side of the hill. There are definitely, there are some considered, there are some other nuances in there that I'll be sure to touch on as we kind of continue on the process in response to that question. Smadar mentioned what we're comparing ourselves against to. I'll be sure to kind of touch on that a little bit more as we go through.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions at this stage?
One more really quick, and it's just kind of speaking to Bob's question about past projects. Is, is there, and maybe I'm getting ahead of the presentation, but will there, is there or will there be an exercise to determine if past projects would have not made it? I mean, to kind of apply what we're doing to how we did in the past and see if this, this project, for example, might not have made it.
Yeah, so we do have some high-level case, some case studies that maybe we can discuss at the end of the presentation. Generally speaking, and Smadar, feel free to jump in here, several of the projects, especially on the residential side, have been close to BART. And thus would qualify for a screening criteria for proximity to major transit stations. We can, I'll touch on those a little bit more perhaps during the, during the, the screening criteria. But a lot of those example projects that Smadar and I have discussed over time have really been related to projects that might actually qualify for screening and just a pure bypass of VMT.
Got it. Thank you.
Great. Ready? Carrying on. So the first kind of perhaps a nitty gritty topic here is metrics. Or what VMT counts for the purposes of SB seven forty-three and the transportation section going forward. Those of you who have read environmental documents before may be familiar with the concept of VMT in the air quality and greenhouse gas sections of the Sequo document. That's more looking at a total pure accounting of VMT. SB seven forty-three for the transportation section, though, really only looks at certain subparts of VMT generated by a project. For example, SB seven forty-three, actually in the statute that brings it into effect in the Sequo guidelines, really suggests that you only look at automobile on light duty truck VMT because they don't want to necessarily affect goods movement, for example. So just come on to give a bit of an illustrative example of how the metrics change depending on what project type you're looking at. So up on the screen here is, let's say, a person, we'll call this person Chris. Travels made two sets of trips throughout the day. Perhaps in the morning, they drove to the coffee shop, then drove to work. They put in a day at the office, perhaps this is pre-COVID, and then drove back home eleven miles. So they drove two miles to the coffee shop, ten miles to work, and then eleven miles home. Then let's say they, they got home, they turned on the AC because it's really, really hot. Then they drove two miles to the supermarket, three miles to go get gas, and then a mile to go home. So Chris drove a total of twenty-nine vehicle miles. It's only one vehicle and they drove twenty-nine miles. So one times twenty-nine gives you twenty-nine VMT. But looking at the different trip types, we're able to categorize them based on the trip origin and trip destination. So you can see many of the trips, or actually all the trips that have a start or end at home, those trip types start with an H for home. The trip to the coffee shop, the trip to the gas station, the trip to the supermarket, those are known as home-based other trips or HO. The other home-based trip type is homework, which is in orange, which as you might imagine is a trip between home and work. That's kind of your pure commute trip. The other trip type is OO, which is other to other. So those are trips that have neither a start or an end at a person's residence. So those are OO, they're in purple. So as I mentioned, different trip types are counted or are included in a metric based on the, the project type. So for residential projects, the metric is looking at all home-based trips. So any trip that a resident makes with a start or end at, at their residence. And then we look at all of those home-based trips for, for a given project and then divide by the number of residents. And the sequel transportation section, we're interested in metrics that are about efficiency metrics. We're basically looking at the, the amount of VMT divided by some number of people. So residential projects, total home-based VMT per resident is the metric. For office, it's a little bit different. Because we're focused, because SB seven forty-three focuses on automobile driving and the primary automobile trips to and from employment generating uses are commute trips. The metric for, for employment generating uses is total homework VMT per worker. Basically, the homework trip is your commuter trip. So looking at only the part of the VMT generated by an office building, for example, that is the commuters. Regional serving projects or projects that are kind of of the retail focus are a little bit different than the other two. And that's because these projects don't necessarily generate VMT on their own. They're really tied to services being provided to other land uses. The, the classic example that I like to use is if you put a Starbucks in the middle of the desert and there are no roads, nobody's going to go to that Starbucks, very different than, than residential or office per se. So for retail and other regional serving projects, we look at all of the trip types that access that destination. So in this case, the home other and the other, other trips, or HO and OO trips. That goes for both restaurants and coffee shops as well as services like gas stations and also other retail like supermarkets, for example. So there, you know, just kind of an illustration there that different project types look at VMT a little bit differently. And we don't necessarily look at all the VMT generated by a project just because of the purview and the intent of SB seven forty-three to really reduce driving by personal automobile. So how do we calculate VMT? This gets to the methods. Now, this one, there's very strong recommendations from OPR and CCTA that a travel demand model be used to calculate VMT. Travel demand models are the best tool for measuring the interactions between different land uses in a city, county or region. And so here, you know, there's a strong recommendation to use the CCTA travel demand model, which you can see a little picture up there of kind of the treat Bancroft Heather Farms area. The model is also, the CCTA model is also an important tool to use because, you know, Wana Creek as a member agency has access to it and the model is maintained on a regular schedule so that there's always updated information in there. And if I remember correctly, Smadar, that CCTA will be updating baseline information on a yearly or biannual basis? Could you?
Yeah, they, they did commit to a yearly basis. I think COVID has kind of changed things a little bit, but there is a commitment on CCTA's part to provide up-to-date baseline information for individual agencies to be able to use.
Thank you, Smadar. So the metrics and the methods inform the thresholds. They tell us what VMT counts and how we calculate it. So this is where we get into some of that nuance about where are we comparing, where are projects in the city going to be compared against other numbers in a, in a threshold. So for residential projects, a significant impact and would be identified and mitigation measures would be needed if the baseline project-generated total home-based VMT per resident exceeds eighty-five percent of the existing county-wide average. So unpacking that a little bit, the metric is total home-based VMT per resident. So we're looking at all the, all the trips with a starter end at home made by residents of the project. And then the, kind of the base number in there is the existing county-wide average. So I believe to Commissioner, I believe it might have been Commissioner Pickett's question earlier about how, how do projects in Wana Creek perhaps stack up? The baseline number in here of an existing county-wide average rolls in land use in Brentwood into that calculation, land use in San Ramon, areas of the county that have a lot more driving than say Wana Creek does. So as Smadar had mentioned, this, this threshold here is, is the least stringent threshold required, recommended by CCTA. For employment projects, the threshold is kind of the same but a little bit different. So a significant impact would be identified if baseline project-generated total homework VMT per worker exceeds eighty-five percent of the existing Bay Area regional average. Now, that's a little bit different and that's tearing directly off of OPR's recommendation. For employment projects, that base number needs to be the entire Metropolitan Planning Organization region. Which for the nine-county Bay Area is the MT, is Metropolitan Transportation Commission or MTC. So that one is, you know, a lot of the employment in Wana Creek is largely focused around the BART corridor. That's where screening opportunities are abound. So a little bit of different nuance there on employment, but it does appear to be less stringent than perhaps otherwise using the, the regional average there for the Bay Area. Just knowing that so many workers in the office areas of, of Wana Creek do take BART. The last of three recommended thresholds here are for regional serving projects. So this is larger-scale retail, higher education. If you had large regional serving, park uses perhaps. And for these more regional serving projects, a significant impact would be identified if baseline project-generated total VMT per service population exceeds eighty-five percent of the county-wide average. Now, service population is a little bit different if you're perhaps not familiar with it. When we look at service population for like a retail establishment, we're adding the, we're going to be adding the number of employees to the number of visitors or, or, or shoppers, for example. And the reason why this works a little bit more for retail is again because or regional serving projects, is because you're really looking at kind of a redistributive effect of demand when a new retail project comes in. So, you know, there's a little bit of nuance there for retail projects going forward that we have to look at more than just one category, whether it's shoppers or employees, we kind of look at them together. So those are the three main thresholds, residential, employment, and regional serving or retail-type projects. There are a few other project types to consider that tier back to the other three thresholds. So for mixed-use projects, it's recommended that each part of the project be analyzed separately. If you have, let's say, a mixed-use development that has a residential component and a retail component, you would look at each of those project types under the residential, in this case, regional serving thresholds for residential and retail respectively. In that analysis, you are able to take into account the benefits of mixed-use. You could take into account the fact that, you know, a resident could just walk down to the ground floor retail to go get their coffee, for example. So you do get to take into account the benefits of mixed-use projects. There's just no single threshold that can be applied to that. The other way to look at mixed-use projects is if you had a, let's say, a residential development with a very small amount of retail, you could look at only the dominant land use from a VMT perspective. You can say, well, the retail there is so small that we don't necessarily need to look at it. We can just look at the residential. Of course, in that case, if the retail is so small, it may just be screened out, but we can touch on that a little bit later. For other project types like hotels, hospitals, or others, you still kind of applying the same concept. You look at the different VMT generating parts of the project using the relevant criteria. So in a hospital example, there is an employee component. So you might use the employment thresholds for those portions of the trips. And then for patients, you would look at the regional serving number because you might be drawing in patients from a region. Or for hotels, the employees are employment, and then you look at kind of the regional serving nature of guests going to that hotel. So you really have three thresholds, but they can be used in different ways depending on the constituent parts of projects. And one last slide before opening it up to questions here. Just a quick note on analysis horizons. For all projects that are non-screened or products that require VMT analysis, they need to do what's a near-term analysis or effectively an existing plus project scenario run in the model. If that model run and that analysis shows that a project has significant and unavoidable impacts in the near term, then CCTA is recommending that accumulative analysis be done. That's something a little bit beyond what OPR has suggested for recommending what's going on, but it also does kind of get back to what Smedar had mentioned about Measure J and some of the growth management program attributes of that. So you have to do a near term, you don't have to do a far term if you have less than significant impacts. All right, we made it through really the technically-denped stuff here, so I'd like to open it up to questions. Please feel free to fire away.
Ian, I have one question for you. Obviously, driving in the Brentwood area and VMT is different than Walnut Creek. Do you think in the future we're going to be looking at thresholds related to a smaller sub-area or sub-region?
Well, there's a, I do not know the answer to that. That is a potential. I think Smedar is nodding her head there. I think she might have a little bit more inside-baseball knowledge from the GMP front.
Yeah, that's a really interesting question that did come up during our, that growth management program group. And so all the like traffic engineer, transportation planning representatives for all the cities in the county were, are part of that group. And there was some discussion of that, but because, and you know, we do have different regions that CCTA kind of splits up into. So we've got Transpac and Wiki-TAC and all of those. But because there's so much interrelation, I think it would make it very difficult to kind of break that down. It's possible that that could be something that, you know, other agencies choose to do. I don't think that CCTA would do that in terms of at least, you know, the Measure J requirements or like as their congestion, as a congestion management agents moving forward. So if anything, we'd still be in compliance if there's kind of like that smaller region as that baseline instead. You know, some other cities may have something that's a little more stringent, but ultimately, they still need to meet that requirement from CCTA, which, you know, if Brentwood, for example, was to choose to use something that was a little less stringent compared to what the metrics are that were, that CCTA is recommending and what we just presented here now, that would mean that they're not complying with what CCTA is asking essentially, right, as part of their policy. So there was discussion of it, but I think for now, at least for several years, we're going to stick to this start.
Thank you. Great. I hate to see them come back and say, well, Walnut Creek, you need to go to 70%.
Yeah, and actually, well, you know, we'll kind of talk about that a little bit because Ian will mention this discussion of what we're calling a mitigation bank and that kind of helps address sort of those issues.
Great.
I have a question. With the VMT analysis, it looks at a broader sphere of influence, I guess. And if it's determined that a project has impacts, who assesses the mitigation and how is it assessed? Because basically, we're saying if there is a need for mitigation, its impact is beyond the sphere of Walnut Creek. So how is mitigation treatment handled in this new approach to traffic issues?
We'll touch on it a little bit more in detail, but as the lead agency, the city would be responsible for imposing mitigation measures and monitoring, much like it does for level and service improvement, level and service-based improvements today within the city limits. So it's a lot of the same, yes, the VMT does other places, but it's more of a city issue there because the city is the lead agency and the ultimate decision-maker on the projects.
So although the impact is analyzed on a regional basis, the mitigation responsibility and improvements or measures that are taken as mitigation are within the boundaries of the city of Walnut Creek. Is that correct?
Correct. And the mitigation measures under VMT relate more to the form and function of the project site itself as well as what measures could be applied at the project level. And we'll get more into this, you know, later in the presentation. What measures could be applied to reduce driving to and from the project site or reduce the length of trips to and from the project site? So it's still site-specific, and that's why the city still has control over that. As I'll note later in the presentation, there may be some, you know, Smedar touched on maybe a regional mitigation bank or regional VMT impact fee that CCTA is beginning to develop and that's going to take a little while to do there. So yes, while the effects of VMT are more regional in nature, the mitigation measures are actually more applied at the local level, hence the city having more control over that.
Thanks.
Ian, with respect to the methodology, the material we have didn't really get into weeds with the, you know, how you actually calculate the VMT. Your diagram helps there. But although it's obviously, once you kind of figure out where you're going, you can allocate miles to the different categories and measure the miles. It seems that there could be, I don't know whether there is, you know, a lot of looseness perhaps in the assumptions you make about how people travel. If you give us a sense of how objective it is, is there an assumption that, you know, everybody stops at the nearest Starbucks on the way to work? They stop for gas, you know, every eight days? They, you know, they combine grocery shopping with other things? I mean, is there a kind of a standard, you know, Contra Costa person driver that we're dealing with? Or is there a fair amount of interpretation in what, how people would drive from a certain project?
So I'll answer that question in two different ways. Yes, there are assumptions in the model about how people travel and the amount of travel that's generated by a particular land use. That is not common, that's not just, that's not just CCTA, that's every travel demand model. And the way that the thresholds and the calculation works are that the baseline numbers and the actual analysis themselves are being done using the same model. Thus, they're an apples-to-apples comparison against each other. And that being said, the model is every few years updated and also calibrated and validated to travel survey data. We're also starting to use more big data analysis, looking at data generated anonymously through cell phones and other mobile devices and cars, totally anonymized and aggregated. You can't track individual people as they move throughout the day. So while there is a number of assumptions, those assumptions themselves are calibrated to some degree. But at the end of the day, the model is our best recommended tool by the state and by CCTA. And, you know, models themselves have some margin of error in them, of course, but at least the analysis themselves with respect to that margin of error is considering each side. I would also note too that projects that have very unique trip characteristics that maybe aren't reflected well in the model, going back to this concept of a good faith effort, there are other tools leveraging big data or other methods to where you can really more finely hone into the VMT for that particular type of project. So while the model is going to be the primary tool to be used, the city still has discretion to require that, you know, the numbers out of the model be checked against some other data source when perhaps the model is behaving oddly or perhaps the model doesn't fit neatly into a given land use category in the model.
The other question I had was, if there is a current project in the permitting process and evaluation, and they've completed the CEQA documentation, but they haven't been approved or denied at this point. Given the, what I took to be the indication that the level of service is not reconsidered as VMT, does that mean that the traffic part of the CEQA documentation needs to be redone on a VMT basis? And if it isn't redone, and all you have is level of service information, how would you evaluate it as a commissioner?
For that, I'd actually like to turn over to city staff first because this is a little bit more about CEQA law. There is some guidance in the CEQA guidelines about implementation dates. So with that, I think of the Assistant City Attorney's hopped off of you here, so maybe he'd like to chime in.
Right. I'll defer to Smedar as to what we're currently doing practically speaking, but my understanding is that OPR's guidance is, and SB 743's requirement is tied to when the CEQA analysis is distributed for public review. So the short answer is no. If you've got a project that's already gone through the process, it's already been sent for public review and you're sort of at the tail end, then you do not have to go back and reanalyze. But if you're sort of in the beginning of the process and you haven't done that yet, then you would have to incorporate VMT. So it's tied, my understanding is it's tied to the, to public review.
And certainly echoing the Assistant City Attorney's comments there, there was a mandatory implementation deadline for July 1, 2020, which that's definitely going to apply to new projects. I think Commissioner Anderson, in the case that you suggested, that's a decision to be made, you know, in line with city staff. And I think, you know, the Assistant City Attorney there is way more knowledgeable on the legal implications of that than I am, definitely not a lawyer.
Yeah, and what I'll also say to that end, you know, we've been well aware that, you know, VMT was going to be a thing July 1, 2020. And so any projects that have come in for review by staff have been looked at by traffic engineering staff just to confirm that, you know, even though we didn't have a firm understanding of what the thresholds were going to be quite yet based on CCTA's recommendations, we still had an idea based on OPR's technical advisory. And so we were still kind of taking a keen look at anything that might kind of fall fall under that category of, ooh, we should probably take a second look at what that CEQA analysis is really going to require. And we haven't had any projects that have had that issue thus far, so I think we're okay.
Thank you. Any other questions at this stage? All right, we'll carry on then. So now moving on to VMT screening. So screening refers to allowing a project to not need to do a numerical VMT analysis because it fits certain contexts or project types or size or other characteristics of projects that generate low amounts of VMT. So CCTA has outlined six potential screening criteria. As Smedar had noted, this is where I think you're seeing a lot of agencies maybe take a more fine-tooth comb to these and maybe make some modifications to be a little bit more stringent. So the first one of the screening criteria are projects in transit priority areas, which are defined as either a half-mile walk shed around either of the two BART stations. So downtown Walnut Creek BART and Contra Costa Center, which part of this walk shed area does kind of go back into the city limits. It also applies to a half-mile walk shed around stops along high-quality transit corridors, which are defined as corridors having peak period headways of 15 minutes or less. So in Walnut Creek, that's the Route 4 Downtown Trolley, has a peak period headway of 12 minutes. So stops along Route 4 actually qualify as a TPA exemption. Now, CCTA is recommending that only office uses of less than 200,000 square feet and retail uses of 50,000 square feet or less in size can qualify for TPA screening. There are some other TPA project qualifications that need to be met in order to take advantage of the screening, and these come from OPR but also apply from CCTA. The first is that the project needs to have a floor area ratio of 0.75 or more. The parking supply proposed by the project needs to be equal to or less than the city's parking requirements, basically that the project site is not overparked. The project needs to be consistent with the sustainable community strategy, which, you know, the Bay Area is plain Bay Area. And the project cannot result in a net reduction in multifamily housing units. If any of those four qualifications are not met, the TPA screening does not qualify automatically. You should do a quantitative VMT analysis to confirm that you're not generating large amounts of VMT.
Really quick, I wanted to actually just take questions for each one of these screening criteria. So I'm opening it up for any questions or comments on the TPA screening criteria.
And I was just going to add too that just because a project fails to meet the TPA screening criteria or one of these four qualifications, it may qualify for other screening criteria too. We're going to find, I think, that many projects in Walnut Creek that are screened out will qualify under two or more screening criteria in a lot of cases.
Yeah, I have a question. It references floor area ratio, but it doesn't talk about residential density. Is that dealt with somewhere else?
It is not. So I think that part of that is maybe a commission consideration here for later is do you want to apply that 0.75 FAR to your residential projects just in terms of coverage? Or do you want to institute an additional criteria for residential density? That is an option that the city can take.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on TPA screening? All righty. Moving on to the next ringing criteria, which is projects in low VMT areas. So if you have a project that is consistent with the other types of projects in the area, so thinking of residential in a residential area, perhaps near BART but not in the walk shed, if a project's located in a low VMT area- If a project's located in a low VMT area and substantially similar to other projects in that area, and it meets certain project size criteria here, as you see on the screen, no larger than 210 housing units or 200,000 square feet of office or industrial uses, you're able to say basically, hey, this project's consistent with its other neighbors. Those neighbors are all low VMT. It's in a low VMT generating area. We can just assume that it has a less significant impact. So, you know, these areas of low VMT generation apply directly back to the thresholds. So here, you know, if a residential project's located in an existing residential area where the home-based VMT per resident is already 15% below the countywide average, you can go take the low VMT screening. Where this wouldn't necessarily apply is if you had, if you're adding maybe employment into a residential area, sure, the model might say, yes, it's in a low VMT area for the purposes of employment, but you need to go back and double check the, the numbers there. So.
Yeah, for this one, I could just point out that, you know, the question of how this is going to affect development. So for example, right now Walnut Creek is below that baseline and so, you know, comparatively, compared to the rest of the county for residential projects. And so this would be that screening criteria where we are in, it would be a development within a low VMT area currently.
So are you saying that all of Walnut Creek for residential development, all of Walnut Creek would be considered a low VMT area?
I would, I would say that the vast majority of it would be. There may be pockets that are above. And of course, just because it looks like that's the case, the city may require that the project prove it through a numerical analysis, but then tear off the screening number. So certainly areas closer to BART in the downtown area, maybe proximate to those locations, definitely. Areas further east on, let's say, Treat or Ignatia Valley, you know, it kind of, the VMT number goes up as you go, as you go further east. Smedar, I know that you've seen some of the VMT maps prepared using earlier versions of the CCTA model for the city. I know that most, the vast majority of the city would qualify here for residential projects, but I think I don't want to go off on a limb here and say 100% of the city would qualify.
Yeah, great point. And also just keep in mind too, is that that baseline that we're comparing to is something that will be a moving target as CCTA continues to update their model periodically.
Yeah, I kind of the same question for commercial development. Would most of, and I'm not talking about every little corner of Walnut Creek, but would the vast majority of the area of the city of Walnut Creek for commercial development also be considered low VMT areas?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I think some areas definitely qualify. There may be other areas that don't qualify. There are other screening criteria though, that are related to neighborhood serving uses below a certain size. So retail and commercial type projects may not necessarily be in a low VMT area per se, but they do have other screening criteria associated with them based on their neighborhood serving nature.
Okay, thanks, helpful.
Any other questions on this screening topic? All right, going over to the next one, which is affordable housing. Now, this one is a little less well-defined than the others. So the general comment is that for affordable housing and transit-oriented developments that would improve access to employment and other opportunities for lower income households, those projects could be screened out. Now, OPR and CCTA have not provided specific guidance on screening under this criteria. However, we have started to see some agencies that are adopting a screening metric based on this approach typically are requiring that the project be 100% affordable and also located in a jobs-rich area. The 100% of affordable is easy to define. The jobs-rich area, I believe MTC has provided some guidance on that, but this is definitely a metric that continues to evolve, just because OPR and CCTA haven't really given specific guidance on what actually counts for that. This is one that's definitely going to be more on an agency-by-agency basis. Any questions on the affordable housing screen? Ready, moving on. The next screening criteria is small projects. So OPR has come out and said that projects that are under a certain size don't generate enough VMT to be regionally meaningful. So for CCTA, the definition of a small project is this project that's generating less than 836 VMT per day. There's a series of calculations behind that that I believe CCTA has, but generally speaking, that comes out to a residential project that's 20 units or less, or a non-residential project that's 10,000 square feet or less. Now, I would also add too, that with respect to small projects as well as any of the screening criteria, if evidence exists that maybe they don't necessarily fit well into the screening criteria, the city can still ask for a VMT analysis to be done. Certainly if you had a 10,000-square-foot retail or commercial or restaurant establishment that was going to be, you know, large regional serving, large trip generation, then the city still has methods to say, no, you can't, you can't qualify for the screening criteria. Any questions on this criteria? Alrighty. The next one is a local serving public facility. So these projects primarily draw users in or serve population in a given local area. So thinking of parks, a library branch, police station, fire station. These are, you know, facilities that really just serve the public and the neighborhoods around it. And they, when a new one of these facilities comes in, they usually reshuffle existing demand and make, and basically shorten trips that would otherwise have to go other places. So another good, good example of this is if you built a new library in an area that's underserved, then, you know, people don't have to drive as far to get to their library. This one here can also occasionally apply to schools or public schools, but there are some other considerations there that, that need to be thought through. Any questions on this one? I believe we're down to the last one after this one. And that is, as I noted previously, neighborhood-serving retail. So these projects, you know, they primarily draw users in from a local area, neighborhood-based, oh, supposed to be coffee shops, not schools, grocery stores, dry cleaners, projects that are small enough to where they're going to add a service that was previously not available in the area. Another good example of this is if you add a supermarket in an area that's currently underserved, now people don't have to go drive as long a distance to go get their groceries. Now, OPR suggested a limit of 50,000 square feet or less for this, for the max cap on project size for neighborhood-serving retail. CCTA, on the other hand, has not made a formal recommendation. They're going to assume that member agencies will consider limits relative to their community values. This is part of, one of the things that Concord is considering, or other agencies throughout the Bay Area, maybe drawing down that 50,000 square feet down to a lower number. Any questions on this one in particular? I do have one other slide, just kind of high level about modifications, but any questions specifically on neighborhood?
Yeah, I have a question, maybe of, Ethan might know this, the Orchards development, which was a, I think it's considered a neighborhood-serving retail. Do you know what the square footage of that was?
There was a specific plan in place that put a cap of, I believe, 225,000 square-foot of commercial. And that did not, not complete the four or five acre residential portion in that corner.
Okay, so the Orchards was potentially, I don't know what it, what it's built out at this point, but potentially up to 200,000 square feet?
200, 225 approximately, yes.
Yeah, so considerably more than this limit of 50,000.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions on neighborhood-serving retail?
Actually Ian, can you confirm, I think the city of Concord limited their, their size to, I believe it was 30,000 square feet in their resolution?
If I heard, that, that, that does sound familiar. It could have, I keep forgetting if Concord's at 30 and Redwood City's at 20, but that seems to be in that 20 to 30 range that many agencies are considering more strict thresholds on this one. They're, they're taking it down to about that level.
Can somebody explain the rationale behind the limit at all and why a lower limit might be desirable in some communities? What's, what's the rationale behind that? Instead of saying, gee, 100,000 square feet sounds good.
Well, I can't speak to OPR necessarily, but in a lot of the conversations that we're having with other agencies throughout the Bay Area, they're limiting it by saying that once you get above a certain square footage, those shopping centers do become, they, they do start to become more regional-serving in nature because of the various diversity of services there. Again, we're talking about, you know, a bypass criteria here. Once projects do start to get large enough, they will take on those regional-serving characteristics, and that really does kind of vary on an area-by-area basis. The other part of this too is the implicit thought of neighborhood serving. You could have a regional-serving retail development that's 10,000 square feet. It's all about developing the evidence behind the decision to make a, the decision to allow a screening exemption. Smedar, do you want to give any other thoughts on that, just on some of your conversations with your other counterparts in the county?
Sure. I mean, I think for, for, in this case, especially for Concord, it was especially related to some of the, some uses that would just have that greater regional draw, just because of the nature of the type of use it is. But one thing that I'll note is, you know, just some random numbers I'll throw out there. A typical supermarket is about 40,000 square feet. A Trader Joe's is somewhere between 15,000 and 20,000 square feet. And so I know Trader Joe's has kind of a cult following type of thing, so maybe that's not a good, you know, example, because that would be a bit more regionally serving. So that's where we would make sure that we take that evidence into consideration. But your typical market is around 40,000 square feet. So that 50,000 square foot number, you know, is relatively, you know, similar to what you'd see as that average retail, neighborhood-serving retail. So it is a bit different than, you know, the Orchards, for example, which does consist of a bunch of different retail uses, but when it was analyzed as part of the specific plan, it was looked at as part of a shop, it was a shopping center itself rather than the individual uses.
So is, is the Orchards, I mean, I live in the area of the Orchards, which is why I'm focusing on that. It was a large, you know, retail shopping center. But as I look at its daily use, to me, it's a neighborhood-serving shopping center. And actually, I think a lot of people go to the Orchards to get dinner instead of going downtown. There's a lot of services provided, so to me, it actually reduces traffic. So how does that enter into the mix of an analysis, not retroactively looking at the Orchards, but if some other shopping center were to come along or one of the existing shopping centers, Palos Verdes example, maybe a, you know, major renovation there that would significantly increase the square footage? How do we analyze that to be certain that we're being fair in the VMT analysis?
Well, part of that is, that's where the modeling does come in, using the model. You know, we would run a plus project scenario that does take into account those retail uses. And then that model run would show the redistribution of traffic, you know, maybe from one residential area to another, or maybe a resident, a residential area would contribute a certain percentage of trips to the, to that new shopping center, for example, and those trips are shorter. If you did have specialized types of uses in that renovation, that's where you want to go in and confirm your assumptions using big data or other data sources to basically go out and confirm the numbers. But that's where the model run is going to take into account, just kind of more broadly, the potential VMT reduction scenario there. So that's definitely a case where, you know, maybe it does, maybe you, maybe the city does ask for the model run to be done, just to confirm that you are actually going to have the effect that everybody thinks that the effect is going to be. Smedar, do you want to jump in there anymore from, from your perspective, since you're going to be the one who actually has to guide those decisions?
Yeah, sure. I mean, yeah, essentially, if we feel like, you know, we need to have that VMT analysis conducted just to confirm that, then no big deal. And if it turns out to be significant, or, you know, less than significant impact, then there's no issue there, there's no mitigation needed. But, um, you know, that's where, that's where this neighborhood-serving retail, you know, that size probably really does start to make difference because if we do something very small as what we're screening out, then, and we're not requiring a VMT analysis for it, then that's great. But then anything larger, you know, we should still just confirm that it would, in fact, you know, people are going to do what we expect them to do, which is go to that area, even if it is a lot of retail. It'll be, you know, shorter trips in the end, for example.
Okay, I, I'm just going to just suggest that we keep an eye on, if this event ever occurs again, I mean, the Orchard was a major project. I don't foresee any particular site or neighborhood or area that this might occur in Walnut Creek. But should it occur, I think it's something that we need to give, you know, concentrated effort to really analyzing it as to the void of the neighborhood. I think there was a void that the Orchards filled, which actually does serve the neighborhood, regardless of the fact that it's 200,000 feet. And part of it's because it's right next to the Shadlands commercial area. So a lot of its service is serving people who are already immigrating into the Shadlands area. And so part of the neighborhood is not just residential neighborhood, but a large commercial neighborhood that they're also serving. So it's an example that, you know, to me, the 50,000 feet looks inappropriate, but I don't, I'm not that familiar with this whole process. I just think that we need to be very wary of, you know, that limit and how we analyze it, just to be fair to any proposal that might, might be presented to us. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thanks. And, you know, it'd be really helpful for me because what I'm looking for is kind of a final recommendation from planning commissions that we can develop a resolution that we can take to council so that we can get this adopted. And so, you know, all that said, is there a desirable area for, for this neighborhood-serving retail for any of the commissioners? Is 50,000 suitable for the screening criteria? Should we not allow any retail to be screened out? Is there, you know, a different number there? Should we be consistent with Concord?
From my point, from my standpoint, I don't have enough knowledge to weigh in and render an opinion, but what I'm saying is that I think we need to be very cautious about establishing whatever that limit is. I guess my gut feeling is that 50,000 feet is too restrictive for the character and nature of what I see in Walnut Creek. I don't know what Palos Verdes Mall is existing, a shopping center with the existing square footage is there, but I would see that as a, as a potential, you know, renovation. The one out at Tice Valley, I forget the name of that shopping center where Safeway is by Rossmore, they went through some recent expansion out there. So we have examples in Walnut Creek that I think we might want to take a look at and use, you know, have staff use those examples as justification for whatever square footage we come up with.
Ian, did, just to be clear, if the, you mentioned that we could not do something more stringent, we couldn't do something less stringent than the county proposal. Does that also apply to OPR? If they take 50,000, do we still have the flexibility to go above or below that?
You could go above it, but then you're, but then the city would need to justify that decision using substantial evidence. When you are adopting screening, or when you're, when you're using a screening criteria, you're still making a CEQA finding. And that CEQA finding still could be open to challenge potentially. And that CEQA finding still could be open to challenge, um, potentially. So, um, but once you start to go beyond, uh, or you start to go less stringent than OPR, now you're trying, now you're, now you're going against some, some evidence that the state has put in there behind, uh, to some degree. Um, their, their non-binding recommendations. So, uh, I think in Commissioner Pickett's examples there, could the city develop substantial evidence to support a higher number? Um, that's certainly an option. Um, but, uh, uh, it does become exponentially, uh, perhaps a little bit more difficult there to start to, uh, to prove it to the degree necessary to, uh, have a defensible analysis.
A question, uh, if we reduce the retail to say ten thousand, does not preclude us approving the project ultimately, it merely takes it out of screening and that they actually have to do the VMT. It doesn't stop the project.
Correct, yeah, that is, that is absolutely correct there Commissioner Strongman. Screening just a pri, screening just applies to being able to say, a project of this type does not need to do a VMT analysis at all. Uh, yeah, it, if you, uh, you know, you can, uh, still require a project meeting screen criteria to do VMT analysis. Uh, but I think if there's, uh, you know, and if it's in the public interest to do the VMT analysis, you can still, you can still require it. So not all projects meeting the screen criteria at, at the thirty thousand foot line. Um, you know, in practice will, will bypass the VMT. And, um, certainly just because a project does not meet the screening criteria, um, does not mean that's automatically going to have a significant and unavoidable.
I would just add that the fifty thousand, to me, seems like a, a fair number to start with. Um, I mean, if you look at the orchards, it is much bigger. Uh, so you could, you'd sit there and I agree with, with Commissioner Pickett that, yeah, this is, this is not going to generate that much. But let's do the VMT analysis and then look, hopefully it would come back and say, look, you're at fifty percent or forty-eight percent of the region, so that looks pretty good. And I think that's in everybody's favor to say, yeah, this is a good project.
Well, well, on the topic of modifications there, I did, uh, uh, by happenstance, on accident, uh, advanced the slide. Um, the other, uh, modification that's coming up a, a lot these days is exempting drop, projects with drive-throughs from screening whatsoever. You know, drive-throughs themselves, uh, do contribute to more automobile trips, uh, making it easier to access, um, a restaurant or a, or a drugstore or what have you. So that's another, uh, mo, a, a very popular modification these days throughout the Bay Area in terms of, uh, in terms of screening. And, and I did also just want to add there that, um, uh, screening does remove, projects need to do VMT for the transportation section. The project still may need to analyze VMT for, uh, the air quality greenhouse gas or other sections that require it as an input. So that's it for, um, screening criteria and potential modifications. Are there any questions on that before, uh, we hop into, uh, mitigation strategies?
General comments on drive-throughs?
Since that's our I would say, based on the two somewhat recent big drive-through proposals we had, why would we want to exempt them from screening? I mean, we had, we had people from Rossmore saying they were going to travel a bit of a ways to go to a drive-through, so I'm not sure that would be a good idea.
I agree.
I agree with that too.
Sorry, just, and just for clarification, you don't want them to be able to get screened out. You want a VMT analysis for any drive-through project that comes through.
Uh, correct.
In retrospect, I should have said, uh, disqualify drive-throughs from screening.
Okay, loud and clear, understood.
Zadar had suggested that I put that one in there because that one might be a one of interest. All right, uh, any other, uh, questions on screening criteria? All right, hearing none, uh, now hopping into, uh, mitigations. So what happens when you have a significant impact? So as I noted previously, mitigation measures under VMT are usually designed to do, uh, one of two things. Either reduce the number of vehicle trips or reduce their length. Um, now Walnut Creek has actually made strides forward on this beyond other agencies with the Rethinking Mobility um, uh, Transportation Strategic Plan, where there have been discussions about transportation demand management strategies, which do reduce the vehicle trips. You can look at this way as, uh, other strategies include changing the size of the characteristics of projects. You had a project that was all residential, perhaps you add some retail. Uh, improving transit access or transit mobility by improving headways and getting them down to the screening standard, subsidizing transit passes, uh, encouraging walking and biking, and then unbundling parking costs, you know, uh, parking, charging for parking. And then in terms of reducing the length of, uh, vehicle trips, uh, you know, that's increasing access to common goods and services. You know, promoting, uh, you know, uh, neighborhood markets, for example, is one that we've heard, uh, from other agencies in the Bay Area. And then if there is a opportunity to have a choice in placing a project in different places, um, locate your project closer to nearby populations, just so you don't have to drive as far. Now, a lot of these, um, apply more kind of at the plan or program level, either in a specific plan or at a general plan level. Um, but really, uh, you know, TDM strategies, you know, tearing off of Rethinking Mobility will be the crux of project by project mitigation going forward. Now, there is one other nuance here that I do want to touch on, and that is, as part of mitigation in CEQA, you have to demonstrate the effectiveness of the mitigation measure. Under Level of Service and Congestion Analysis, it's pretty easy to do that. If we were going to say, hey, a project needs to go at a turn lane, we're very certain that that turn lane is going to reduce congestion. Uh, we kind of have a good innate understanding of that. Project by project, uh, application of transportation demand management measures, uh, there's no guarantee that they're going to work. And the body of evidence behind the effectiveness of those strategies, uh, up here is the CAP COA document, uh, where some of the effectiveness, uh, measures are quantified. Uh, there's no guarantee that the strategies will work and that the strategies will, in fact, mitigate, uh, to the levels, um, on a project by project basis. So because of that, um, transportation demand management plans for projects need to include a monitoring requirement such that periodically the project, the project itself is monitored to make sure that's achieving the VMT reductions as part of mitigation that they said that they would. So that's a bit of a nuance there, and as I noted, the actual, uh, demonstrating the effectiveness to the level needed in CEQA is a, um, a newer challenge that perhaps we didn't have to think about as much under the level of service, uh, regime. And that's again, more on a project by project basis, but the city's already starting to take steps forward on that with the, uh, with Rethinking Mobility. So that's more at the city level, thinking more at the regional, uh, level here. There are several options being considered going forward. Um, there could be a future VMT Impact Fee Program, um, done by CCTA to fund, uh, VMT reduction strategies. Or there could also be, actually, I believe that they did qualify for grant funding for, uh, a pilot, um, VMT mitigation exchange and banking program. So, uh, mitigation options are going to be largely local at first, but there could be other strategies here more on the regional level coming, uh, coming down the line. Spinar, you and I have had plenty of conversations about mitigation. Is there anything that you wanted to add there before opening it up to questions?
No, um, I think that's, that's good. I mean, just, you know, in talking to CCTA about this VMT, um, Impact Fee Program and looking at it from a regional level, think about regionally serving projects, not something, you know, that really gets down to, oh, we need to put a sidewalk, you know, on a block. And that would really be at the regional or the city, the local level. Um, but we're talking like much more big picture, like corridor type improvements that, um, that would be considered as part of those um, VMT Impact Fee Programs, um, that are regional. Um, and then, yeah, CCTA did get awarded, um, funding to investigate this mitigation exchange, uh, program, which is basically a cap and trade system, um, kind of like how it works for carbon emissions, but it would be for VMT. So we'll see how that goes in terms of the exploration from that. It's actually very fascinating stuff, um, coming out of UC Berkeley, so.
And, uh, yeah, we'll be involved, uh, Fair and Peers will be involved in that pilot program for CCTA. And we'll also be involved in a pilot, pilot program out of, uh, SCAG down in Southern California. So, um, that, that appears to be, it's on a regional level, uh, where some regional mitigation coordination is, uh, is going. Any questions on mitigations? This is, uh, largely the last slide in the presentation before we get to kind of, uh, opening it up for more general questions or, or feedback from, uh, from commissioners, but specific to mitigation, any questions? I, I would just add one more thing, just on the mitigation front. Because of the lack of research behind, um, uh, mitigation effectiveness, um, there could be situations where a TDM, uh, suite of improvements or a suite of TDM measures is identified. But, um, you know, a project may need to take a significant and unavoidable impact because there's not enough literature behind it to back up the, uh, the effectiveness, um, numbers of those, of those options. So, um, that's a little bit of a nuance that hopefully as more research from the California Air Resources Board comes out here in the next coming months, that that's, um, not as big an issue. But, uh, did just kind of want to point that out there in terms of, uh, mitigation's going to take on a new, uh, new level of importance going forward, uh, projects in a different way than, 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 than they were being considered under law of service.
So, uh, the, uh, you said the Air Quality Control Board is taking on the responsibility or the lead effort in establishing the effectiveness of mitigation measures?
Uh, sorry, I might have misspoke. I, I meant to see, I meant to say the California Air Resources Board.
Okay, whatever you say, I, I was clarifying who you's. So, so there is an agency, California Air Resources Board, is undertaking studies to determine the effectiveness of various potential mitigation measures. Is that correct?
That's correct. And actually, Fair and Peers is involved in that effort, and we were involved in the, uh, previous effort, this CAP COA document, uh, which was from twenty ten. So, uh, so the research is being updated, um, as we speak to apply to a more broad context of, uh, a more broad, a set of project types and project contexts.
Okay, and, and that information you're thinking is within, available within months?
Uh, the last I heard, that is the case. Um, the, that research effort has been going on for a little bit of a while. I believe CARB has been reviewing the research in order to understand how best to proceed with it. But it is, um, that research is, uh, that research is progressing.
Okay, and in, in Walnut Creek, because of our proximity, uh, to Bart Freeways and everything else, it, it's, we're in a favorable position as far as projects being under any of the criteria that, that are going to trigger this. So we may not be dealing with mitigation measures before we have some reliable information on effectiveness of them. Is that correct?
That is generally correct. Um, I'm going to go off on a limb here and, uh, perhaps guess that most projects that, that do, that do identify significant impacts are just going to be just above, uh, the threshold in a lot of cases. Certainly you have a special project type, maybe that's not the case. One of the other, um, pieces of information that is in CAP COA and will be refined as part of the CARB research is, um, as you start to add more transportation demand management strategies on top of them, um, there is diminishing returns. So for a lot of suburban, uh, contexts, the maximum feasible TDM reduction or reduction in VMT, if you applied all feasible TDM measures, is fifteen percent. So there is a cap on how effective you can be when you apply everything that's feasible under the sun for TDM. Um, the good news, like Spinar had mentioned, and I think as, I, Commissioner Pickett, you had picked up on, is that a lot of, uh, parts of the city, especially for residential, um, they're already below the limit. And whatever areas are above that threshold just naturally, aren't going to be fifteen percent above that. It's going to be just a little bit. So the mitigation measure should work.
Yeah, and one thing I'll add is that, um, you know, in looking at these mitigation measures, um, even with this new documentation that's going to come out, um, it's really important to take context into account. So the, the types of mitigation measures or TDM strategies that are really appropriate for one type of land use in one part of town may not be applicable at all in a different part of town for a different type of land use. So it also has to be reasonable and really, you know, pass that smell test. So that's something that we would be looking at, um, when we're assessing those, uh, traffic analyses as they come through.
Any other, uh, uh, questions about mitigation strategies?
Well, I'd like to thank both of you for a excellent presentation. It was very, very informative, very helpful. What I'd like to do is see if the commissioners do have any additional questions, and then we will see if there's anybody in the public who wishes to make a comment. And then we'll come back to the commissioners and, and have them provide, uh, any feedback. Uh, so with that, uh, are there any additional questions from commissioners? Commissioner Strongman, you're on mute, mute. Thank you.
Does the count, what part, the unincorporated Walnut Creek still have to apply to these requirements too?
Yes.
And one question, I, I've been trying to wrap my head around this thing after reading all the documentation. Do you have an example of a project that would pass under VMT but fail under the old program of, uh, loss of service? Does that make sense?
It, it does. I'm trying to pull up our, uh, our case study matrix here. So, uh, I think one example of that might have been the, uh, Paragon Apartments project on, uh, North, uh, North Civic. Um, I believe in that case, um, per my notes here, that project, um, had a, had some level of service impacts that were then mitigated to less than significant levels. Um, under Senate Bill seven forty-three, that project would just be screened out because it's near a, uh, a transit station with fifteen minute, uh, less, uh, frequency of service. I mean, I guess it's probably route four. So that's one where, um, that's one, uh, scenario where it had significant impacts and needed mitigation under level of service. But under VMT, it just, uh, flies right through.
Do you have another one for, say, commercial or retail, by chance?
Yeah, um, let's see here. If I can find one in here. So I think one that, I think one that might be, um, generally applicable there is I think there was the, uh, I think it's called the Walnut Creek Executive Park Project at, uh, twenty-one, twenty-five Oak Grove. Uh, in that case, uh, you know, that had some medical office and general office and some general retail. The original, uh, finding for CEQA under level of service was that that project, uh, needed to provide mitigation measures. In that case, because the retail is only thirteen thousand five hundred square feet, not knowing more about the project, then in that case, the retail would likely just be, um, screened out. I don't believe we actually have one where, uh, where it's pure retail and large enough to where it might require an analysis on its own. But I think kind of going back to, um, uh, some of the other, uh, shopping centers that have been, uh, that have been mentioned, just knowing how they, they are interacting with land uses around them. You could have large amounts of retail that, um, because they're serving areas that were underserved, you're going to have, uh, less than significant impacts from that. Whereas under level of service, um, the number of cars being generated by that project applied to the roadway system might cause significant unavoidable impacts.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Seeing none, we will, uh, see if there's anybody from the public who wishes to provide any, uh, comments to us. Mr. Secretary, do you see anybody in the public?
Uh, we've been monitoring throughout and no one new has appeared, and, uh, there are no, uh, participants seeking to make comment.
Great, thank you. Then, uh, why don't we go through and, uh, let commissioners make, uh, their recommendations or, uh, provide any feedback, and I'll just randomly start with, uh, uh, Commissioner Strongman.
Let me myself. Uh, I generally like the direction we're going with this. I, on the, uh, screen out, I think we might want to limit
I, on the screen out, I think we might want to limit it a little bit. Want to check a few of the things, particularly the size of retail. I don't really want 50,000 square feet of retail coming into my residential neighborhood without some checking of that stuff, process. But otherwise, I really like the direction I'm going with it. And I don't know what other comments you need on that.
Commissioner Strongman, would you have a, a recommendation on a number you might want us staff to consider?
I would even go to the point for if you want to put retail and residential to not screen it out at all. We'll want to check it.
Okay, Ian, does that make sense to you?
Yep. So I think what I'm writing down here is for retail and residential, residential areas, it'd be disqualified from screening. I guess, what about other areas of the city, if you, if you don't mind me asking?
I draw a blank on that one. I'm sorry.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to Commissioner Reiser.
Thank you. First of all, what an amazing presentation. It was just excellent. It was just spoon fed and very understandable and everything quite bite sized and easy to digest. So thank you for that. I, I don't have, I don't have a lot of, of input. I do think that I, along Commissioner Strongman's point, I'm not sure I would necessarily zero it out, but I do, I do believe, I don't know what the number is, but I do believe that retail screening should be held in, in check to a certain extent. And what else, what else? Retail screening. I, I obviously appreciate the, the approach that SB 743 presents with a more data-driven approach and the, and the per capita metric and anything that's going to, anything that's going to get people out of their cars and, and shift travel away from vehicles, I think is a move in the right direction. I just, I like this. So in any event, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward?
Okay, unmute. Great. Yeah, I, I have to concur that that was a pretty amazing distillation of an incredible, incredibly large amount of technical information. So, so I definitely appreciate that. So thank you for that. I think that we've, you know, I, I think generally we need, we should be following the, the OPR guidelines because I hate to see our staff being burdened with having to kind of produce their own standards and justification for a lot of things for which we don't have a lot of data yet. But that may be not the right approach, but that's just kind of my gut feeling on this until we have a little more information. That being said, I, I am intrigued by Bob's suggestion that we include density in, in addition to the FAR ratios. Because I think that's something that we're concerned about with our housing here in the city. So I think that would be a useful, a useful measurement to consider. And I too am concerned, you know, if our, all cities around us are going with a lower number for neighborhood serving retail, then I think we should probably heed that as well. Because I think that our, the, the amount of neighborhood interest in the drive-through issue did demonstrate that, that car trips, particularly coming from out of the neighborhood to a retail establishment are a great concern and have a big impact on the quality of life in a neighborhood. And so I, I agree that we probably should be a little bit more rigorous in determining what those trips are and, and, and the, the effect of that without having an arbitrary or too large screening limit or threshold with regard to that. So those are my comments, but thank you overall for, for the presentation. Really appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Pickett?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll reiterate, and Melissa just mentioned it, that there might be benefit to have some consideration of residential density in a parallel fashion to the FAR. One thing that's always been a challenge is, you know, residential is done by the number of units and not the square footage. And, you know, there's all sorts of complex issues with that regarding how many vehicles people have, et cetera. But anyhow, if there's some way to include the consideration of residential in the issues, that'd be great. I, I lean more towards the higher level on the neighborhood serving retail. 50,000 square feet is small. And, and I think, we're, we're not talking about converting residential zoning to commercial retail zoning. We're talking about development, I think, of property that's already zoned retail. And I gave the example of Palos Verdes small. You know, there's a lot of retail serving, Tice Valley was the other one. You know, neighborhood serving retail that may, you know, is developed in the 50s or 60s. And it may justify, as the population has grown in those neighborhoods, upgrading of that. So I would say at a minimum, we should stick with the 50. And I really don't want to burden the staff with going and justifying 60,000 or 100,000. But if we stick with the OPR standard of 50, I think we're going to find our job, city staff's job and the results better. It, it, it won't really offend me if we end up going with something lower because I think in the end, they just have to go through an extra step and they'll, they'll justify the size that they're going for. But I, I would be inclined to prefer the 50,000 recommended by OPR and just call it good. And we'll see, see what happens. This is new territory for all of us. And there's a lot of stuff we don't know. And we're trying to make decisions and set criteria in a vacuum. So, you know, we got to take the best step we can, I think. And to reiterate what other people said, traffic engineering has always put me in a fog. And, and you guys did a really clear job presenting it to us. So I, I appreciate that. It was like the fog cleared up for the last hour and a half. And thanks for that. But those, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian Sputtar, my only question comment was on the low income housing, I believe it was. Were we thinking it had to be 100% to be screened out?
You tell us?
Yeah, sorry. I, I thought I was on mute there for a second. And I'm just writing down comments here as, as we're going along. The, the, as I think I know, the, the issue with the affordable housing one is that, that seems to be one where not a lot of guidance was given and just kind of like I said, looking at other, looking at other agencies in the Bay Area that are exploring that one a little bit more. 100% appears to be the most popular answer in terms of establishing a screening criteria associated with that. Both in terms of encouraging 100% affordable development because that's, you know, certainly one of the benefits of having a screening criteria is that you know that you don't have to do VMT. But also just in, in terms of just also defensibility, you know, 100% is a perhaps an easier number to justify than the 90 or 80 or 70 down to 60 or 50. So, and, and that gets back to, you know, just kind of the gray area here that there's not a lot of sequel case law behind this. And so it's a little bit of both on the defensibility side, but also community values and trying to help out 100% affordable developments through the development pipeline.
Great. I, I'd be agreeable to the 100%. Are there any other comments or input from any, oh, Commissioner Anderson, I think I skipped you.
I guess we were doing reverse alphabetical order. Yeah, I did, I want to agree with others. Presentation, I came in with a lot of questions and most of them were answered. All of them are answered and most of them are even being asked. So that's a kind of a pretty thorough presentation. I, I think just on a general note, I, I'm very pleased with this, this shift from, from level of service to VMT. One of my pet peeves, probably many of you, is the amount of litigation that CEQA generates, which has nothing to do with the environment. I think that, that moving from level of service, which is noted in the documentation, was really not an environmental impact, but a convenience impact. It's something which is more directly related to environmental impact. Is more in keeping with CEQA in general. And I think because it indicated it's a more straightforward calculation, a little bit easier to understand. I think it's less likely to generate or, you know, as much litigation as the, the current traffic approach. And when it does get litigated, it'll probably be more on environmental questions than other random things. So I, I like the, the whole idea of it. I, I don't have a strong opinion on, I probably agree with Commissioner Pickett on, you know, signal 50,000, if it's lower than that, that, that's fine. You know, there, there's a case to be made that, that, you know, if you're, if you're in doubt, go ahead and do the calculation because then you have the information. So I'm, I'm happy with 50,000. I'm happy with 100,000.
Great, thank you. Any other commission comments? Sputtar, you have everything you need from us at this point?
Yeah, thank you so much for your excellent questions and feedback. This is really what we were looking for and we have some really solid basis to, you know, prepare this resolution for, for council to adopt kind of these thresholds. So I really, really appreciate the time. A couple of things here, I just wanted to add, you know, part of this is that we're talking about CEQA specifically, but, you know, as part of our, our development process, applicants are required to do some kind of traffic analysis of sorts. And so they're not looking at traffic impacts necessarily as related to level of service, but we still do have level of service policy in our general plan that Ian had mentioned before. And so we are still requiring that type of analysis to be conducted right now. And, and just something to consider as we move forward, looking at the general plan as we start to revisit as we get closer to 2025, you know, what we want to do and what makes sense and what others are doing within, you know, the county or within the, the region just to kind of lessen potentially the burden for developers as part of their application process. Because right now, what we're essentially doing is hopefully they're screened out from this VMT analysis, but they're gonna, they're doing more now because we are requiring level of service analysis for certain size projects. And then they would also be required to do VMT analysis. So just something to keep in mind. And then also administratively, we do have traffic analysis guidelines or transportation analysis guidelines that staff uses for, for assessing these, you know, traffic studies. And so those are getting updated to include any of the VMT kind of screening criteria, thresholds, et cetera. And just kind of refreshing it, updating it so that the traffic analysis is not looking at what the impacts are as it's related to CEQA, but traffic effects, which are those level of service related changes to the, to the system. So just wanted to kind of add that, that information on what we're doing on the staff end.
Great. Well, again, thank you both for the excellent work you're doing on this topic. And glad it's you and not me. All right, we will move on now to the next item on our agenda, commission member and staff reports and announcements. Mr. Secretary, do you have any announcements for us?
No, Vice Chair, there are no announcements from staff this evening. Oh, I lied. I just thought of something. I am happy to report and relay, you may recall a few months back that I had an announcement relative to a, an award that the planning agency here at the City of Walnut Creek was awarded from our local Northern California APA chapter. We were recognized for innovation and implementation efforts, et cetera, related to housing, planning and other efforts. I am happy to report, we just received word end of last week, that the state APA has recognized the City of Walnut Creek with an award of merit for our efforts. So we are both recognized locally, regionally here and statewide by APA. So I just want to pass it along to the commission.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any commissioners have anything to report or any comments? Commissioner Ward?
Um, I just wanted to put in a plug for anybody who hasn't filled out their census forms to please do that. It's, it's not too late and it's really important for us on a local level to have the census be filled out accurately for our residents. It, it determines allocation of services and affects our planning for the future and also enables us to get grants because we have more information regarding who is in our city and what, what services they might need. The census can be filled out online. It's like either seven or nine questions, I think. And it also can be, there's a written form that's sent to people who haven't responded yet. And just as a reminder, there is no citizenship question on the census form. So if that's a concern, you don't need to be concerned about that. So just putting in a plug for that, for anyone who hasn't done that yet. It's quick and simple and it's really, really important to our city. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.